So, the microphone not working.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Okay.
We'll assume it's working. Can you hear out there okay? Yeah, I don't think this is working.
I mean, I can hear you when you, when you go like this.
Should we pull it closer and see?
The volume may be.
There you go.
Thank you. Okay, well, that being taken care of, welcome everybody to the Town of Cumberland Planning Board Meeting for Tuesday, June seventeenth, and calling everything to order. A couple of housekeeping items. Jeff Maholic has resigned from the board and, as most of you are aware, just got elected to the Town Council from West Cumberland. So, last night, the council named David Noonan as our new planning board member. So, we have a full compliment once again, and David, welcome. And we also have an intern that's working with Bridgette in the planning office, Ava Mosley. So, welcome Ava. You'll, before things are done, you'll get a pretty good education. So, anyway, we'll get into things, and the first item is the approval of the minutes of the April fifteenth meeting. So, I'll listen to a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
Second, seconded, discussion, all in favor, opposed, and abstentions, one abstention. Okay, we're gonna move into staff site plan approvals, and the first one is the Portland Water District to amend installed equipment at one sixty-eight Fairwind Lane, tax assessor map, R two, R zero two C, lot ten. Bridgette?
Sure. So, this one was to swap out installed equipment on the water tower. It's for a meter reader antenna, so the antenna communicates wirelessly to water meters on houses to get the meter readings. So, that was that one. Let me move into the next one.
And the second one was originally approved July twenty-second but not constructed, and this is the Friends School of Portland down on Route one for a four hundred and forty-eight square foot tent platform with shelter structure at eleven Route one, tax assessor map. And so, that's.
Yeah, so Carla initially approved it. It was never constructed in two thousand and twenty-three, so that came back. It's an outdoor, really learning space off of a trail for the Friends School.
Okay, and then we have one minor change, and that's a de minimis change approval granted for the Rusty Lantern up on one eighty-one Gray Road, tax assessor map, U nineteen, lot two, and a portion of one seventy-three Gray Road, tax assessor map, U nineteen, lot thirteen, to relocate the Gray Road sign and corresponding landscaping with an addition of an HVAC enclosure. So, that's all within the parameters of what was approved in the.
Yes, yep, I reviewed everything for the intent of the original proposal, and they installed all the HVAC equipment and realized it was ugly and wanted to put a fence up, and I said, yes, please.
Okay, so now we'll move into hearings and presentations, and item one has been tabled, and my understanding is that this is going to be taken care of via the town assessor, not assessor.
The code enforcement officer.
Code enforcement officer has come up with something alternate, so we will not see this again. And we're tabling item two for the reason that until item, the Town Council and us deal with item three and item four, this cannot be brought forward because there has to be a change in the ordinance and there has to be a change in the zoning map. So, that being said, then we'll move on to item three, which is a public hearing to recommend to the Town Council to amend the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, Chapter three fifteen, twenty-eight point six, Public Safety Telecommunication Overlay Zone to include a parcel at fourteen Tuttle Road, tax assessor map, R zero one, lot three. Bridgette?
Sure. So, from my memo, you can see the Cumberland Police Department has been working with Verizon to co-locate public safety radio equipment on a future tower with the Verizon communication antennas. The current public safety radio system has some gaps across town, and this co-location in this location gives emergency services critical coverage that it, that needs to provide services to the residents and minimizes the impact to the taxpayer. So, the, so you see just the revised language in the packet, and then we'll get into the map change as a separate hearing.
So, the only change in the langu, in the ordinance language is the addition of this particular zone. Right now, there are three zones where it is approved, and this would be number four. Is that correct?
Correct. There are three parcels where it's already approved, and this would add the fourth parcel.
So, Matt and Chief Rumsey, do you want to add anything to this?
Good afternoon, Planning Board members. Chip Rumsey, Chief of Police. I know very little about radios, but I can speak from, from layman's terms to this proposal, and if I get way off track, I'm hoping that Bridgette or Matt will reel me back in. I've been chief here for just over nine years. I had my nine-year anniversary on June first. On my very first day at the police station, when I walked in to meet my new coworkers, a number of them shook my hands and said, welcome to Cumberland. Can you please fix our radios? It's been a nine-year struggle to try to get a plan in place that wouldn't be so onerous to the taxpayer of Cumberland that it would be untenable so that we can have reliable public safety radio coverage throughout town. We've been working with a radio engineer for a number of years on this plan, and so what we identified during our time working together is that the topography of the Town of Cumberland makes it actually pretty difficult to get really great radio coverage everywhere. It results in us having some gaps in our radio coverage down by, the coastline is a particular problem. The area of the fairgrounds is an issue. Route one hundred by where J Brothers is is a dead zone for us. It's also an area where we have frequent traffic crashes. So, what happens is we get out of the car, police and fire in a number of locations in town to do pretty important work, and our officers and firefighters can't talk on their portables. And you don't have to have a great imagination to think of some scenarios where that could go very badly for the men and women that we put out there to do this difficult work, or the members of the community that we're out there trying to take care of. This location, well, just to back up, the other overlay districts that were approved by council were approved several years ago, I believe, when we were working with some potential tower developers who were interested in coming into town and partnering with the town on towers where our public safety equipment could go, and those fell through. So, while my understanding is there may have been some overlay districts that were approved previously, we have not built towers and have no current plans to build towers in those overlay districts. Recently, we were approached by a tower builder who wants to build a communications tower and offered to partner with us to get our equipment at the top of that tower. And when we ran the GPS coordinates of this proposed tower by our radio engineer, he was giddy about the quality of coverage that this would give our police and firefighters to help us with our, with our project, which includes not only that proposed tower here in this overlay district, but also some equipment here in the center of town, some equipment out on the, on or just outside the west end of town on some existing towers. So, we believe if this all, if all the moving pieces of this come together, we will have excellent radio coverage for our first responders, improves the safety of our community, and will, as Bridgette mentioned, lower the overall cost of this project dramatically, because if we had to build a tower like this on our own, I've heard a number of figures, but I think probably somewhere between five hundred thousand and seven hundred fifty thousand dollars is probably a reasonable estimate. So, that is probably the long answer to your short question, sir, but if there's any questions.
Any questions from the board? Yes, Anne?
So, we have these other, we have A, B, C, lot twenty-five, lot twenty-six, lot thirty-four A. So, I understand there are not cell towers on those other?
I just, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I want to make sure. Are those the, those were the previously created overlay districts? One of them is prob, one or two of them are probably on Range Way, and one of them is probably off Blackstrap Road on the west side of town?
Yes.
There are not towers there, and there are no current ongoing conversations about putting towers.
Well, there is a tower on Range Way.
There's an existing tower on Range Way that has been there for years.
And it's full.
It's full, yes.
Okay. But the other two, there's, there's nothing there?
Right, the, that's correct. The overlay, the two, if there's two parcels on Range Way that are part of the ones that we're discussing, there was discussion about putting another tower. So, if you go up Range Way to the very end of the road, there's an existing tower. There was discussion of putting another tower off into the woods there on town-owned property, and discussions with the developer for that site fell through, so there's not, not currently discussions to build a new tower out there.
And, and, oh, I was gonna say, so this new location will make other towers unnecessary, or at least new towers, this will be?
It would make it unnecessary for us to build our own tower to put our radio equipment on top of. As far as the needs of the telecommunications industry, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. But I, I assume it will help because I think those towers that are on Range Way now are full, and that is prompting some of the effort to do what the developer wants to do.
Bridgette, can you put the new zone up on the screen? Do you have the ability to do that? Just so everybody, we've got a pretty good crew here tonight, so it might be good, so everybody in the audience can see.
Would you like the map or the ordinance language?
Oh, the map. Well, yeah, I guess we can show the ordinance so everybody can see that the only change we're making is the addition of that zone. So, that would probably be the first thing, and then the second thing is that, that we will show you exactly where this zone is. Any other, while we're doing that, any other questions from?
Peter, I, I do.
Yes?
From a cost perspective for the town, Verizon would be absorbing the cost for the construction of the telecommunications tower, as well as the maintenance of the tower, and all we're doing is adding our equipment to their tower. Is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement.
Thank you.
So, we'll get, any other questions? Yes, what?
So, is, is the town paying a lease or a, a long-term payment for the tower itself, or?
So, as I introduced myself, when I came up as Chip Rumsey, I'm gonna introduce another chip who knows so much more about all this than I do, Chip Fredette.
Hi, folks. Chip Fredette here on behalf of Verizon Wireless and its business partner, Vertical Bridge. It's been about ten-plus years since I've been in front of you. It's good to be back. We've been working with the White Pine Community Church to lease ground space from them to construct a new facility to provide better coverage throughout the eastern side of Cumberland and the force side area, most importantly, for Verizon subscribers. I've been in conversations with Chief over the last couple of years about their efforts to build out their network, and I don't recall when exactly what it was, but I said, hey, we're looking to do something up at the White Pine Church off Tuttle. He says, whoa, holy smokes, that's where we need coverage. And so, so Verizon leased ground space. We will eventually assign that lease to Vertical Bridge, our build-to-suit partner, the other tower owner, if you will. The plan would be for the town to lease space on that tower from Vertical Bridge, but it'll be a zero-dollar rent. There will be a lease agreement in place that's necessary for the relationship, but there won't be any rent charged to the town. Hope that answers your questions.
Any other, any other questions? The, the, just to walk everybody through the process on this, that right now that a cell tower is not a permitted use in that area. So, two steps have to happen, and you can see item three, where we have to amend the ordinance to add that area to, to the, as a special use for cell towers. And then also, the second thing is that we have to amend the zoning map to show on the zoning map that this is a special zoning area. So, before Verizon can do anything, we have to recommend to the Town Council tonight whether this happens or not. If we recommend it to the Town Council, they will meet on the fourteenth of July, and at that point, they will either approve or disapprove the, adding these zones and changing the ordinance. At that point, Verizon will come in to us with a site plan as to all the twenty-two conditions of approval that they have to meet, and also at that point, they would bring in schematic drawings to show where, from probably every major location in the area, what that cell tower would look like. So, just to give everybody an education of this is how the process works, and these are the two things that we're dealing with tonight. So, are there any other questions from the, from the board?
So, it's, it's too early to ask any questions about where this is, access to and from, and anything about.
Well, we can ask anything we want to. That's no problem. We're, we're equal opportunity. Anybody, when we have the public hearing, I'm sure folks are gonna come out with questions and everything, and we are a little different from the school board. When folks ask a question and need something, we've got a couple experts here in the room that'll try to answer your questions as best as possible. We just try not to leave you hanging. So, yeah, anything is in order, Stacy.
But there's no, I understand it's too early to see a drawing of where this is, where this is going. So, asking anything more intense than that is probably too early, so.
But you can see the ordinance up there, that this is the only change we're making is adding a, adding one additional, one additional thing. So, yes?
Well, will this help Route one hundred at all, as far as the coverage over there? Because you said there's a big gap over by J Brothers where there's a lot of accidents. Will that, I know it's further away, but will that help that at all?
Right. It wouldn't help that area. Sorry, I was giving you sort of an overview of all my trials and tribulations over the last almost decade, but there are some plans in place to get us up on some existing towers out in the west side of town, I think Falmouth, and then maybe one up in Gray that's gonna, that's gonna fill in those spots. This tower, particular tower location would provide amazing coverage for us up and down the coastline, Route one, Route eighty-eight, Route one, and then pushing in toward the center of town.
So, Bridgette, could you go to the zone now so everybody can see where that is?
Hey, can I, one question?
Yeah.
While you guys are here, what is a certified fall zone? Real listed, you guys, I'm just interested in.
A certified fall zone?
You guys have to provide a certified fall zone for the proposed tower that's entirely within the boundaries of subject property. I'm just wondering.
Oh, oh, okay. So, so a fall zone, of course, refers to an area in which a municipality might be concerned that should the tower fail, it might cause damage, i.e. fall zone. I always find interesting when the fall zone is greater than the height of the tower, because they don't bounce, but I digress. The certified fall letter, I think, is what you might be referring to, is one of the conditions under.
Just reading what's in here on the, it's listed on the.
Yeah, so, one, one of the items that we would provide to you, assuming that the zoning change were approved by council, we'd be back in front of you folks, and one of those items in our package would be a letter stamped by a main PE describing how the tower would fail, should it fail, and the idea there being that they don't fall from the base, that it would likely fall from a mechanical hinge point on the tower, meaning that would fall in half as opposed to falling from the base itself, thereby meeting that, or benefiting from the town's relaxed setback provision in this zone, this overlay zone of seventy-five percent as opposed to one hundred and twenty-five percent. So, if the site is, if, if the parcel is not designated as part of the overlay district, Cumberland requires a one-point-two-five tower height setback. With that letter, assuming that it is rezoned, we would enjoy a relaxed setback provision of point-seven-five the tower height. And again, you would need a letter from me, from an engineer, stamping and certifying that same. That, that's, I think that's what you were referring to there.
Thanks.
Other, other questions from, from the board? If you, that, well, it'll come up on the map, but basically, I think, as you go across the bridge over, over I ninety-five and you see that garage and old house on the right, well, White Pine has bought that parcel which borders on the Tuttle Road and also on, on Forside Road. Or as our beloved ex-soccer coach Hutch would say. Or as our beloved ex-soccer coach Hutch would say in East Cumberland. So here is, here is the map of where it is. And again, you can see how it borders both Tuttle and Forside Road. So that being said, I will open up the public hearing, and anybody from the public that wishes to speak is welcome to come up at this point, or have any questions that they have. Yes, come up, come to the podium, so, yes, please. And just state your name and where you live. We're very friendly here, so just feel free.
I'm D. Dog Burgess, and I live at Six Carriage Road in Cumberland Forside. And Stacy, if you wanted your question answered, I think that Bridget could give you the answers, because we got a whole packet from her, and it shows where everything is supposed to be at some point.
Thank you.
Yeah. And my question is, what were the alternate sites that were looked at before Verizon approached the town? And I'd like to see the list, actually, because I'd like to know why they were rejected. And it seems like there are, you know, the tower we were talking about that's on Range Way, that's a one-point-five miles from the proposed tower. There's a tower in Yarmouth that is one-point-five miles from the proposed tower. And the one that is in Yarmouth is on the, the right-of-way for the power company. And there's a whole swath of that in Cumberland, so I was also wondering why that wasn't looked at for the tower.
So who's got, is that Verizon? You may be the best positioned to see, or both you and the chief, if you could answer that. No, no, stay there then, there's no problem. No, come back. No, that's okay.
Yeah, so to answer your question, this has been on and off in the making since 2013. I've looked at a number of different parcels of land throughout the northern end of Cumberland, in the southern end of Yarmouth. There are very few existing structures upon which we can hang antennas in this area. She mentioned the CMP cross-country transmission line, we looked at that. She mentioned that there's a tower on those, I think what she's referring to is that AT&amp;T and T-Mobile both have installations on that end of town. They also have the same colocation installations on the western end of town as well. CMP no longer allows antenna colocation on their transmission lines. So I struck out there. We looked at the Wyman Energy Plant, they wanted nothing to do with antennas on their smokestack. That stands probably four, I think a little over four-hundred feet tall. We talked to the Portland Water District about putting antennas on their tank up off Fairwood Lane, topic of discussion earlier tonight. That didn't work because we couldn't get an easement across the neighboring parcel. So we looked at all the existing structures in this area, oh, I apologize, our Range Way. She did mention Range Way, we're on, we're on that tower, SBA owns that tower. In fact, our lease was coming to an end with SBA, and we needed to look for a new site. Hence, I talked to Bill Shane, and hence you have those two piano-key parcels diagonally across the road that are now part of the overlay district. That's something that I had started with Bill Shane a long time ago, but Verizon ended up being able to renew their lease with SBA, hence we remained in, in place at that site. It's actually our oldest site in town, we call it Cumberland HD. This site that we're proposing here is in addition to that, it wouldn't replace any of those. I looked at a number of different, again, a number of different raw land parcels along the coastline here, and a lot of rejections for all different reasons. Covenants, disinterest, we're gonna subdivide and use it for something else, whatever the case was. Here, in fact, Bill Shane mentioned to me that the White Pine Community Church purchased this a few years back. I contacted them, and they said, well, we can't make a decision for approximately one year. And Verizon said, well, we can't wait that long. So I resumed my search, exhausted two or three more properties, and about eleven months later, I got back in touch with Pastor Joe, and I says, hey, you still, he says, absolutely, we're interested. And, and here we are. So we leased ground space from them. They provided us space approximately in the middle of the lot. And we'll have a site plan, of course, for you to review in the future. But the access would route from Forside Road, not using the Carolyn, that private old tote road north, Carolyn Ridge Road. Instead, it's going to cut a new driveway in, which is part of the White Pine Community Church's plan for the new parish anyhow. So you see, a lot of what we were proposing to do is only permitted by the landowner because it harmonizes with, with their grander plan for the new parish, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other members, yes, come, come? Can you please go to the podium? We, this is on television, and the public is interested in what you have to say.
So that was not an answer to my question, because I feel, I don't want to hear from Verizon. I want to know what the town explored first, because that's, that's what we're talking about tonight for changing the zoning. We're, we're not really at Verizon yet, and I think the town has a concern about its communities, its neighborhoods, and that's why I would rather hear what was explored by the town before we go to Verizon, who is concerned with the bottom line and maybe not our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Chief?
Sure, so I think I can, I think I can help. To the specific question of is there a list, there isn't a list. I can tell you very briefly two things. Number one, the, the engineer that we have been contracted with for the last few years, his name's Norm Boucher. He owns a company called Communications Design Consulting Group. It's his job to go out and look at existing structures to see what coverage they would provide us, whether there's space on those towers, whether we could afford to be there. And he's done that for us. He advises us that this is the spot where we need to be. In addition to the research that he's done, and I believe speaking with town manager, that as you mentioned, there's gonna be a couple of other public meetings, and, and if it would be helpful to the planning board or the council, Norm could come and show us some coverage maps to show us exactly where we are, where we would be on that structure, and, and some other comparative analysis. There have been two other builders, in addition to the work that Chip said that he has done on that particular parcel. There were two other cell, one cell company and one tower builder in that east side of town that, that approached the town and expressed interest in building a tower and partnering with us and getting our equipment up on the tower. We were very excited, we had several meetings with them, we did a ton of work with one of them over, over the course of months, and their plans fell through, and they never built a tower. So one of those was the overlay district on Range Way. Another one was on a piece of property somewhere near Route one, and they just didn't come to fruition. So we've been working on this, this problem for several years, and we are now doing the dance with a partner who can come here and build a tower where I can put my equipment on the top and let my police and firefighters be able to consistently and safely communicate with their home base to take care of the community. So that's why this is important to us.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else in the public have any comments or questions? Yes, yes, ma'am? You, 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 would you like to comment? Yeah, come right to the podium.
So my name is Ivana Tarling, and I have been Cumberland Forside resident since nineteen eighty-eight, so that's thirty-seven years. And now, we are, our neighborhood that is very populated faced with a tower that is hundred-and-eighty feet tall on a hill, so that makes it even taller. And we are totally opposing to this idea to live next to a tower, cell tower, that large, and in our neighborhood and on that lot. That lot was given to the White Pine Church as a gift to White Pine Church. And so for them, and the town also, not to explore other choices for that parcel is really, I, I don't even understand it. I don't know how much Verizon would owe the town in taxes a year. Does anyone know that offhand?
Not right off the top of our head.
Okay, so let's say one payment, one Verizon payment that is gonna be actually paying to, towards taxes to the town. So my idea was, why not propose to White Pine Church to sell half of that property and develop for housing? And let's say average taxes in our area are probably fifteen thousand dollars a year? And how much would town lose or forego in payments to the town in taxes, property taxes? If that lot was developed to, let's say, ten parcels? That would be hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year to the town. That would be a million and a half over ten years. We are residents of the highest, with the highest burden of taxes on Forside. And now we are being asked to accept a tower right that, right in our, in our backyard, essentially. My house would be right next to it, almost second house of it. So for me, and plus, White, White Pine Church would be able to also build their church next to the development. So why is everybody so gung-ho on Verizon Tower? That, I understand the police would love to have it, but really, we would like to know how many dropped call, calls happened when, for emergency calls, calls from residents of Forside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to comment? Yes?
Hi, I'm Janet Puiston, and I live on Blanchard Road. I actually did not come here for this particular thing, but I have to say that although I sympathize with your concerns and your concern for the tax base and so forth, cell phone towers do not have children. Therefore, cell phone towers are not contributing, say, two children per household, which would be approximately twenty people in this scheme, to the school burden, and that is significantly higher than fifteen thousand dollars per child, much less per house. It's, 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 it's sort of the basic fact of our existence these days. Good luck.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment? Hearing, none, yes? Oh, come on up.
Planning Board, thank you very much for this opportunity. Chief, really appreciate the police department, the fire department, the emergency services, and all that you do for this town. And that's what, I understand that that's what you're looking out for.
Excuse me, sir, could you speak closer to the microphone?
Yes, sure.
Thank you.
Chief, I just want to say thank you for all your work, and that you're looking out for your, your people. I appreciate that. I'm a resident at Six Carriage Road, let me show you where that is. It's right here. Very close. And in fact, I think I will see the cell tower from my front window. So this issue is not in my backyard, it is in my front yard. I am gonna look out my picture window, and please drive by Six Carriage Road, look at my window, two windows, and realize I'm gonna wake up every morning, look out that window, and see a cell tower. I'm a resident of Cumberland for, maybe not as long as at Ivana, but close. We raised our children here. We did not buy that property to look at a cell tower. It really changes a lot. Ask any real estate agent if having a cell tower out your front window is a selling point. I wonder if this is a Cousins Island moment. Everybody knows when they go down to the shore, they go to the town property, stand on the beach, and look across the water. We bring visitors there, because we're proud of that property. First thing they say is, what's that? And they are referring to the Cousins Island Power Station. It is an eyesore. Before we moved to Cumberland, we lived in Yarmouth. There was a huge discount by the property taxes that CMP paid to the town of Yarmouth for the privilege to have that facility there. Our family outgrew our property, and we moved to Cumberland. My question is, on this Cousins Island Power Station moment, how much money is the town of Cumberland going to receive in a tax deduction for this eyesore? Is there any talk? Or is this because it's church property, as soon as they build a structure on that property, that property will be tax-free because they are a nonprofit? I understand White Pine Church pays zero property taxes to the town of North Yarmouth. My question to the town is, once this tower is built and the church moves in, how much money is the town of Cumberland going to receive? Zero dollars? I think that's a question that needs to be answered. I have some other questions, and, and to give you a perspective, to everyone here, how close would that tower be? Well, if you went to my neighbor's yard across the street, a little bit closer, you could hit a golf ball and hit the tower on the proposed site plan that's available at, at the town office right now. You could hit a golf ball. That's close. I want to know, what is the town's consideration for the minimum distance from a cell tower to a child? There are children that live in this neighborhood. There are children. There are children that live in this neighborhood. What's the acceptable distance for them, living in their homes, sleeping in their beds, from a cell tower that's putting out energy twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week? Because that's what they're gonna promise their clients. Ninety-nine percent coverage all the time. So this is, these are questions that I have. What's the acceptable distance? So what is the town gonna receive in tax money? Is that tax money going away? What's the acceptable distance? No one's talked about an acceptable distance here. Now, this is all in regards to the cell tower. Speaking to the phone, the telecommunications for the town, I understand that's not, their radios are not cell phones, but it's something different. And my question is, could there be a series of smaller towers or structures that are attached to existing telephone poles that could get the same results or close to it? I understand the engineer that has been working with the town was probably very excited about this location, and I can see why. But it doesn't take into account the residents who live in that neighborhood. And so I wanna know, what other kind of alternatives are there? Are there, there can't be just radio antennas that are on cell towers. We just don't have enough of them. And can they be put on existing telephone poles and have a series of smaller ones and use existing structure? Take that tax money and put it towards that. Chief, you threw out a number of half a million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If that property, or half of that property was developed, what the number I heard was, and I feel it's on the low side, one point five million dollars over ten years. But the Verizon lease is for twenty-five years. So we should be multiplying that by two point five. I think the town stands to lose a lot of money. And that money could be used elsewhere and to find, maybe not the perfect system, but one that works well. So I just, I'm gonna just leave you for the moment. Leave you with the thought that please walk outside tomorrow morning, stand in your driveway, stand outside your front door, and look up and visualize a cell tower that you would see for the rest of the time that you own your house. It makes an impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, interestingly enough, we do have, in this town, I don't think a lot of you folks are aware of it, but actually within the steeple of the Congregational Church in the center are two cell towers. And I don't know, but my suspicion is that, of course, every company has to pay a tax on personal property. So I assume, and I don't know for a fact, that any Verizon probably has to pay tax on the value of the cell tower. So Matt?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board, Matt Sturgis. I'm your town manager. And that's a great question regarding the taxation, and I think it's important to note. You're perfectly correct, churches are an exempt organization, but under state law, the tower would be taxable. So even though, if the church, I think what we're looking at here is a three-lot subdivision of land. Ultimately, the church parcel being, I guess you could say, the Tuttle Road side would be parcel A. Sandwiched between that and the southerly end, or I guess you could say southerly end, By Carriage Road, there'd be another parcel there that they're looking to develop individually, possibly with a home, or I'm not sure what their ultimate end goal would be with that. But the sandwich parcel in between would be the one that the tower would be mounted onto. That, properties leased to entities that are non-exempt, even though they may be owned by an exempt organization, have to pay taxes under main law. So prior career, I was a tax assessor forever. It feels like we did, I mean, looking at, the last tower that, we put one up in Cape Elizabeth on our, at our transfer station parcel, it cost us roughly three hundred thousand dollars. Now is almost a decade ago. So unfortunately, we live in a world with tariffs and steel prices that are going through the roof. If you think that's gonna be roughly five to, five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand, let's use five hundred thousand dollars because it's easier math. Our tax rate's roughly twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. It's about thirteen to fourteen thousand dollars just for the tower would be what the tax amount would be. And that would be just for the improvement. You also have land value that would be invested into that. That would also be taxable. So that land value, it's on the foreside, so the site value is fairly substantial. And then there's also individually, and I hope I'm not giving these guys heart failure, but with every tower addition that's added onto it, each of those entities that locate onto the tower are also taxable. So if it's Verizon, they have personal property that would be on there, that would be taxable as well. Telecommunications, a lot of that property is also taxable. So it's not a free ride, it does generate revenue for it. So that's a really good question, and I think it's important to get the answer there for that. So that was, now if the church ends up building their church on parcel A, the laws are there for that. If it's their house of worship, that would be exempt. Land buildings, the whole shoot and match. There was a question regarding height. The planned height is a hundred and forty feet, not a hundred and eighty feet. I know it's, Ellen, you know, it's a question of perspective, and I understand that. But I know the proposal that we had, and Chief had confirmed this with Norm, our radio fellow, that it's a hundred and forty feet is what they're looking at for the height of the tower. So part of that was, in the conversation was to say, okay, what would be, what could get the work, let's say, to not describe it very well, what can get the job done but have the least amount of impact? I guess is kind of what the conversation that we had regarding that was. Chief had talked earlier about the reason why this would be a key parcel for us, and at least as far as accomplishing what our telecommunications goals are for the public safety entity side of it. And where that is cited, and the other two towers that, A, have capacity, and B, will allow us to, or would welcome us to join up, they really perform almost a perfect triangle. And that's what gives us the coverage better than any other location that we've modeled. We've looked at, you know, in the year that I've been here, I think they've looked at, as Chief said, I think, three different sites. We're looking for a dance partner, really, in many of this, and it's trying to find it. The other side of it is, if we did do it on Range Way, if we built our own tower, we'd probably spend, again, we'd spend, as a tax, you know, from the town side, we'd spend six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, probably, you know, from beginning to end, equipment and everything through that, on that. And we still wouldn't accomplish as much of the coverage as we need to get onto the foreside in that area. But having those three legs, so to speak, that hits that, you know, one of them's up on top of Mountain Road, that big tower that you can see when you're up on Blackstrap. Another one, I think, is over on Dutton Hill Road. So if you think about those two big peaks, and then really the valley, if you think about those really high points, that's what allows us to capture that Route 100 section as well because it comes right across that section. So that's really been the motivation as to where we're at. I guess part of it is, the primary driver for us is successful communication and making sure we don't have dark spots because when there's a moment of need, a seconds matter and communications matter. Especially if, you know, if you're having a heart attack, or if you're having an issue with someone, a bad guy, or someone, something's going, God forbid, something goes wrong. That's, we don't like, we really don't wanna have those dark spots. So that's really been our motivation on this side of it. And again, finding a good dance partner to do it with. We've tried with three or four different entities to try to get them to do something. And that work existed before I started here. It's just, you know, trying to find a solution to a problem that, you know, when seconds matter, we'd like to have that there. So, and then obviously, this is the bottom line to the taxpayer as well. Having it, I mean, it's great to have a free location and not have to pay it. Other times, we've looked at up to two thousand dollars a month for co-locating on another tower. That deal fell through because they got full and they didn't wanna, really wanna work with us anymore. We'd be happy to pay that if we could find a location, and they were trying to generate revenue. So it's a tough challenge, but I think that, as the Chief said, he's been working on it for nine years. I've worked at it for one, and, you know, this is the best plan we have at this time. And, but we do wanna be sensitive to what people's, you know, concerns are, for sure. And there's a lot of different areas there. It's a long process. One of the other things, Mr. Chairman, you talked about the changing the zone. It's really rezoning one parcel versus creating like, I almost had heartburn for a moment when you said the zone, I was concerned about the whole foreside.
No, we're not zoning the foreside yet.
So thank you for that clarification, but happy to answer any other questions as needed too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just, can you wait? I'll be delighted to have you, just the Chief first?
Sure, just to one of the questions that was asked by the gentleman that came up to speak. I know the manager answered just about all the points. Regarding the tower height, when Verizon approached us to discuss this, our radio engineer basically said, "Let's build a two-hundred-foot tower." "That's great, higher is better." And we said, "That would be wonderful, but we appreciate the concerns that we're likely to hear from the neighbors." So as Matt mentioned, how high does it have to be to minimally get the job done? And that's where we landed on a one-hundred-and-forty-foot structure with our equipment on top. So the question of, can it be done with telephone poles? Sadly, it can't be. Why we need the height is for the equipment that's at the top of that structure to look at equipment on the top of other structures. So we need to have line of sight between this tower and other towers where we have our equipment eventually making its way back to the dispatch home base in Wyndham. So the idea of putting smaller towers on smaller structures, that can work. I think you see that more like in urban environments where you can have small towers that talk to each other on top of city buildings, and they can go from building to building. We are just in little valleys in the topography of Cumberland, and we need to have height to get over the tree line and over the topography to look at the tops of those other towers.
Ma'am, you wanted to come up and make a comment? Would you like, if the public, the public wants to know?
Okay. I actually just wanted to ask a very simple question, although it's actually probably outside the purview of the board. But it seems to me, looking at that map, that a lot of these concerns would be allayed by putting the tower near Tuttle Road and the highway and having the church take over the lower half of the property. That would get it out of people's front yard views. And it would seem like a, I'm sure that there's some reason why it's not a good, simple solution to the problem, but I wonder if anybody's thought about that?
Verizon?
Sure. So when we approached Pastor Joe about leasing ground space from White Pine, they already had a civil site design in place, or at least a schematic anyhow. And it showed that three-lot subdivision that the town manager just mentioned. And the parcel, for perspective, the parcel's approximately twenty acres. It's one of the largest parcels in the foreside area. Granted, there's some other land across the street that might look as larger and vacant, but there are covenants and easements that would never allow us to build a commercial structure in that area. So back to White Pine Church. Again, what this GIS map doesn't show is that the plan for the church will be to subdivide that lot, that twenty acres into three separate lots. We were essentially told, if you wanna work with us, X marks the spot here, Chip. So we were given the space. If you were to bisect that property, again, the church will go on the northern portion, and they're looking to sell, I say sell, I don't know what the future is for the remaining nine in change acres, but the proposed site will be on that northerly of the two larger chunks, if you will. Absolute, yes, absolutely.
Can you use the mouse?
Because the public wants to know, right? So the young lady in the audience asked me to point on the map of the location.
Go ahead to the map.
Yeah, Bridget's got it for me, thank you. And the accessway would come virtually straight in, perpendicular from Foreside Road to that, which will, again, also mirror that which the church will come before you and propose for the new parish.
Other than you designing a hundred-and-forty-foot steeple?
We looked at doing a possible steeple as well. We looked at all possibilities with this new church. And unfortunately, doing any kind of future building co-location on the church wouldn't work. One, because of the design of the church itself, and two, I'm not gonna have a steeple tall enough to get above the white pines that are in that area.
Okay, any other, any other members of the public wish to comment? Yes?
Alexandra Palmer. I live in Cumberland, haven't lived here long. So earlier in the meeting, you said there were three current towers. Earlier in the meeting, you said there were three current towers. Is that correct? That are currently being serviced?
I don't believe there are three towers. There are three lots previously approved for the overlay district. I believe there's one tower in the, two, two towers.
Two towers. And who are the carriers that are providing service for those towers?
The Verizon guy seems to be able to answer that, but I certainly can't.
Is it Verizon or another carrier?
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, yeah. You know, we're reasonably loose here.
Sure, sorry. So Verizon is on the two existing towers, the one on Range Way, owned by SBA Properties. And I imagine, I think AT&amp;T and TMO might also be on that tower. Verizon is also on the tower it developed on the town's property at Valhalla, back in 2013, 2014. I actually worked on that with you folks about ten years ago.
Thank you. So it sounds like there is another carrier. Has the town sought any other bids from carriers to look at other options?
I think they, I think that got answered before.
Well, I don't know if it really did. It just seems like it's such a shame and a disappointment when we're looking at such a beautiful coastal scenic route in Cumberland and making quick decisions when this isn't data-driven. I don't see much information that's providing us kind of the full picture of how this is going to impact our community. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, you wanted to speak? Yes, come on up.
Hi, my name is Austin Reeves, and I live at 186 Foreside Road. I am the direct neighbor to White Pine Church's property. My primary concern in all of this is that I've heard many of the gentlemen involved speak tonight about how the planning of this has been years in the making, but we just received a postcard in the mail two weeks ago giving us very limited time to gather our thoughts and research for ourselves to understand what type of impact this may have on our properties and on our lifestyles. I have two small children. My kids are in the Cumberland school system, and I plan on living in my property and my home for the rest of my life. And so my biggest concern going forward with this is the health impact and the exposure risk that my family has, living this close. We would be the closest people inhabiting property near this cell tower. And I understand that there are, you know, two sides to the coin and that there are a lot of people that there are, you know, two sides to the coin and that there are a lot of people that are gonna tell you that 5G towers may not impact health, but there are also a lot of studies and a lot of people that will tell you that it does and that it can cause any number of health risks and, um, and side effects. And I have, I just, I take issue with the amount of time that we've been given to be able to, um, do research and form opinions and, um, understand the type of impact that this is gonna have on our lives and, and our homes and on our properties. And, and that's, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. I will note that, again, the action that we will take tonight, either for or against, is a recommendation, uh, to the town council from us. It's, the council, uh, can either take our recommendation or not, and they will have the same public hearing that, uh, we had tonight and, and they are the ones that will actually, uh, determine whether this zone is going to happen or not. But I mean, they're watching and, uh, so they're really, there, there's another cut at this apple at the council level. And then, uh, if it goes to a site plan, uh, the, the applicants have to put together a very, very detailed, uh, site plan of, uh, that answers a lot of the technical questions and, uh, uh, they have to jump through about 22 hoops, uh, from us as far as the, the site plan is concerned. So this is not the end of the process, uh, but understand that, uh, on the agenda and I, that when you go on to our agenda, uh, you will see the exact same stuff that we see. I mean, if a site plan comes in with 250 pages of drawings, you're going to see the same thing, uh, that, uh, that we see. The only difference as far as the planning board is concerned is we're a quasi-judicial institu-, institution when it comes to reviewing of plans and, uh, we can't be, we can't be lobbied or contacted. Anything has to go to the town planner. We can, uh, you're not able to either email or telephone us due to our quasi-judicial. That doesn't, that doesn't, uh, count with the council. You can, uh, send call and do everything, uh, you can with them. So that's just a little bit more detail, uh, as the process. But what we try to do in the planning board and, again, it really hasn't happened, doesn't with the school board, that we try to answer the questions as they come along. We may not give the other answer, but, you know, rather than leaving somebody hanging, we try to do our best with the information we have to kinda get you answers. And if you watch the school site plan and Rusty Landard and all those things, you get an idea that we, we, we try to listen. So is there anybody else that has anything to comment on before I close the public hearing? Yes, ma'am? Yes?
Um, I don't think, I don't think we have gotten a good response and explanation on the remaining two lots near Range Way and why, since there is a, a, I, I was there. I, I saw the tower and I stood next to that tower and I know this is a, a very unpleasant view. Uh, and, uh, we haven't really gotten any response from, I don't know, the chief or, or Verizon. Why those, the, the remaining two lots are not part of this discussion to, for the, for Verizon, for instance, to invest in their tower there? I know Wayne's, uh, no, Range Way and the proposed tower on Lot 14 is only a mile and a half. Only a mile and a half. So who can answer those questions? Why are we not talking about the remaining two lots off Range Way and put that tower over there? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Yeah, could you keep the, you know, second time around, uh, brief, but come on up and say what you need to say, please?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for the opportunity. I will keep this short. Um, I have a couple of follow-up questions. Actually, I asked one question. What is a safe distance for kids to live near cell towers?
I, I couldn't hear.
What is a safe distance for children to live near cell towers? I did not hear a study presented tonight. I did not hear an answer. I have, I listened to what you said about the church in town here that has two cell or antennas in the steeple. I think that would be a great suggestion to the White Pine Church. Why can't we put signals in their steeple? Why can't a steeple be incorporated into their church? I'd rather look at a church steeple. What I think about when I think of churches, I think of neighborhoods. I think about community. I think about reaching out. Churches survive based on community. It brings people together. Cell towers don't belong in neighborhoods. Churches do. The other question I have is the fall zone, or let's say, um, if a tower was to fall, does it fall on a parking lot? Is that, what, what is the area that is considered safe? It falls in the parking lot. Is that considered safe? What is, is anything built within that radius that could have inhabitants? The discussion that I've heard tonight is, oh, we're only talking about 140 feet, not 180. Let's change the ordinance then. Let's put it in at 140. Why are we going to 180? But, yeah, I think we should ask the church, "Hey, can they put it in their steeple?" And be more of a community member in our new community. And we'd love to invite them to be there, but boy, cell towers doesn't seem to has a place in a residentially. It's currently zoned for residents. And I think it should stay that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else wish to speak before I close the public hearing? Hearing none, uh, we'll close the public hearing and thank you for, yes, Bridget?
Um, I just wanna point out for the board, um, chapter 315 dash seven is the low-density residential chapter where an antenna, as defined in 315 dash four, subject to site plan review, um, in 315 dash 72, isn't allowed, permitted use in the underlying zone. So just clarify, and I think we heard, um, Mr. Faradet say this, but the overlay zone allows the reduction of the fall zone from the 1.25 or the 125% of tower height to the .75 of tower height.
So it's a, a narrower fall zone?
A smaller fall zone. Yeah, my understanding is that these are engineered and when, if the planning boards gets a site plan, we would see engineered plans, but that these towers are really engineered to fall and collapse on themselves and they don't fall over. They crumble. Um, so the fall zone, I think, is a legacy in chapter 315 dash 72. The 125% of height, I think, is a legacy, but, um, so this, that's why we're here now is to get the reduction in the fall zone.
So anyway, I will close the public hearing, uh, turn it back to the board to see if they wish to recommend this to the town council or recommend it with, uh, any other, uh, any other comments. So I'll turn it to the board.
All right. I'll go. Um, I am certainly empathetic, uh, to the abutters. Uh, and I think if I was in a butter to a lot that was being added to the overlay zone, uh, I might want to say all of the exact same things that you are, uh, except probably for somebody would replay my comments that are gonna follow, um, which is that while I don't know all of the data and we really don't have the resources as the planning board to, uh, access that data ourselves, we generally rely on the experts. And in this case, I'm, for lack of any better expert, I am, I am going to rely on some of the things that the Verizon gentleman has said. I, I get that there's a bias there. I'm also going to, uh, believe the chief that there is an issue with radio communication and that they have done, um, a large amount of investigation to try and figure out how to deal with that. And I think, uh, from what I heard, Range Road wouldn't provide the same coverage and wouldn't clear up the dead spots that this tower would. Uh, the Verizon rep did say he, uh, had looked at putting towers in the steeple, but that wouldn't get them, uh, above the tree line in that lot and therefore, again, it wouldn't give them the cover, it wouldn't solve the coverage issue. Um, and in the end, I think our duty as a planning board, or the way I, I won't speak for the other planning board members, the way I view my duty as a planning board member is to try and do what is right for the town as a whole, even when it does have negative impacts on an abutter. Um, and there was something else in there. I don't think we can speculate as to tax incomes from various uses because the, the property owner gets to make those decisions. Uh, we don't get to say, "It would be better for us to have this use, so we want you to do that." Anyway, uh, so, all of that said, um, I will be voting to recommend the change to the town council. Bridget, I do have one question for you. So property owner is going to, if this plays out as we've sort of heard tonight, not that that couldn't change, uh, property owner's gonna come for subdivision?
Um, the most current plan that I heard from the property owner is that they are going to do one split, which is allowed by right.
Right. So there are only two lots then?
And just to clarify for the board, adding the lease does not create a subdivision. I confirmed that with the town attorney, so-
So it's not gonna be three lots?
It will, it will not be three lots.
If it does go to three lots, then it would be subdivision. Uh, and if it did go subdivision, this would need to go to a separate site plan, correct? Wouldn't be, or would it be part of a combined subdivision slash like, site plan review?
So if it did go subdivision, if it happened fast enough, it could all go in a coupled subdivision site plan? I do not expect it to go subdivision.
Okay. So then we'd be looking at a site plan for the church lot and a site plan for a second lot?
So we'll be looking at a site plan on the entire existing parcel, uh, 'cause no subdivision exists right now.
Right. But when we need two site plans, if they are two different lots, wouldn't we have a site plan for the church? If, if they're going to split-
If they're gonna build a church. But it's not, it's not, that's not gonna happen at this time.
Okay. But so, okay. But each, each lot would have its own separate site plan?
Yes.
If and when it gets developed?
Got it. I'm following you now. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments for Lorraine?
Yeah, just briefly, um, I travel the mid-Atlantic region a lot, covering Maine, Massachusetts, Connecticut, New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Maryland, Virginia. And I see a lot of, um, cellphone towers that are disguised to look like trees. So I'm just gonna throw that out there for potential consideration. And I just, I, I think I wanted to echo what you, you said, um, that what we're looking at tonight is changing the language in the ordinance and the map overlay for this particular lot. That does not mean that tonight we're approving the cellphone tower. That comes later. So those changes then go to the town council for them to approve and then it comes back to us and then eventually we will then get a site plan. We've had a lot of comments about visual impact and aesthetics. Um, I've heard the potential health concerns and there's pros and cons. There's plenty of studies that say, yes, it's a problem. There's plenty of studies that say, no, it's not a problem. That is not one of the things that, um, when we go through a site plan review that we would look at. So I would behoove you that if you have that concern, raise that also, um, to the town councillors. And then I would suggest that, um, if we vote as a board tonight to forward these two changes to the town council, um, if they're approved and then we get to a point at which, um, Verizon comes in with their site plan, that, um, I would recommend a site walk so that we can actually walk the property as a community with abutters, with other concerned citizens and actually get a visual for what is going to happen on the property if, if we approve the site plan. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Anybody else? Bob?
Um, the concerns of a lot of the abutters, in, in my opinion, is, you know, once we either recommend to approve or, or send this up to the council or not, it kinda kicks the horse out of the barn. And I, I think that what I saw tonight was, the big question with the history of the search sites wasn't really, I mean, I know you guys have done a lot of work and I know there's a big issue with coverage on the foreside, but I think what I saw tonight was there's a lot of not a well-planned out thought, "Hey, we did, we've done this search on this site in a list of three or four or five sites where you guys are zeroing in on site, probably which, communication-wise, is the best site for radio transmissions, but is it the best site for, you know, the overall process?" So, um, I'm feeling like the church should be here representing and being able to ask some questions about how they're designing their church, why they couldn't do some other different stuff with it, um, how they could work together with the town, with the residents next door, 'cause I think one of the things that's said, a church is supposed to be a good neighbor and I don't, I, I think they should have, be here representing 'cause they're gonna be the biggest beneficiary of this process, I would imagine, putting a cellphone tower. I think there needs to be more robust responses to, hey, why are we designing it at 180 or 140 or 120? Is there another way to do it at 100? Is there a way to make it look like a pine tree? Is there a way to put it in a steeple? There's a lot of questions that I think Verizon is a big company and a cell tower's a big thing and there's a lot of benefits to the town, there's a lot of benefits to them, and there's a lot of negatives to the neighbors, in my opinion. I think we have to, as a, as a board, I think we should be looking at, hey, how do we protect- hey, how do we protect everybody's interest in this process? And I didn't feel like there was a lot of good answers, and I know it's the best spot for you guys, coverage-wise, I get that. So, if it is, and it works, and it's going to, you're going to be able to put a bunch of other entities on that tower and make some money, I think you've got to come back with a lot more information about, you know, and I get it's, it's a tough business to be involved in, you guys probably deal with this every time, but I don't think, I think, is there a way to do it shorter that is going to be acceptable, maybe not perfect? There's a lot of questions that I feel, if we approve it, and it goes up there and they approve it, that it's going to get built, and it's going to be hard for anybody to stop it from happening. And I think now's the time for everybody to figure out, because I think it's a good site for, I don't think anybody here thinks it's not, but is it going to, and it's going to affect the value of real estate, without question, period. So, there is some, I think, a lot of really valid concerns, and I didn't see, from Verizon, and I'm not kicking the town down the road, but I think you guys need to do some more research on coming up with answers that really help these guys understand the amount of work you put into it, because I'm sure you have, but I just didn't see it tonight. So, I wouldn't personally be, I think there's more work to do, in my opinion.
Anybody else? Stacy?
Yes, I do understand. I'm not, I'm not living in your homes, but I have had situations with the town where I had a, something in my backyard that was frightening and atrocious. So, I understand where you're coming from. I also had a five-year career in broadcast management, and so I do understand that location, when it comes to towers, is critical, and it's not something that you can play around with significantly. So, I really do believe that, and that area and the safety that the chief is trying to provide for us, I understand. It's, you just, it's very, very difficult to find a tower location, not for Verizon, but for what we're looking for, for the town, that works. So, I do understand what Matt and the chief are trying to do.
Anybody else? Ann?
Yeah, I'll just say, I think Verizon and the chief have convinced me that this is a good location for this cell tower, and that this would work. My concern would be the public health questions and the appearance of the tower. And I remember years ago, when the Cumberland Church put the cell tower up, we thought about things then, and I think we were convinced that that was fine. So, are there studies that maybe are around that people could become comfortable with, that the, that this is not a safety issue for the health of the children who live nearby and so on? Or is there some way that this could be explored, shall we say? And, and not, I don't know, for the town council, maybe, maybe that would be helpful for the town council to make their decision, or when we get to the review of the site plan. And the other thing, I think, is the appearance of the tower. Obviously, that's a big concern, but, I mean, will there be an effort to disguise this? There's a lot of cell towers that you drive by, and you go, what, what? That was a cell tower? I thought it was a giant tree, you know? So, I think that, will Verizon be able to work with that? So, I guess that's kind of for future, future reference, because I do feel inclined to think that this is a good location, and that we should probably go ahead with the approval tonight.
Anybody?
I have a quick question for the chief, if possible. Is that possible right now?
Sure.
Around that middle road area, that's a lot of accidents that with a, with a four-way stop eventually is going to go in, per the DOT, of course. What's the coverage in that spot? I know it's really close to that, but is there proper coverage there? Because that's kind of a high-crash area, so that's the biggest concern for myself right now.
I think we have decent radio coverage there. I anticipate that between the town council meeting, and then, if you vote to recommend the approval, and this goes to town council, and then comes back to you, that we'll be having some further conversations about coverage, and probably have our engineer here with some coverage maps. And I have never worked patrol here, so I don't spend as much time out on the road as my folks do, but I believe right there, in that particular location, we get a decent, we get a decent signal.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Unless you want to go, Peter, I have a couple-
Go ahead.
Bridget, a couple of things about this specific language here. A, B, and C, R-03, Lot 25, R-03, 26, R-07, 34A. Are there, are any of those currently being utilized by a tower?
Yes.
Which, which one? Do you know?
I can find out.
Well, here's my, and here's what I would throw out to the board, number one. And then, even if we don't reflect it in the language that we recommend directly, that, you know, it can get passed on to the council. One, what lots there, and what's the height of the tower, and could we line through, or could the council, when it approves its final language, line through any lots that aren't being used, so we clean them up and don't sort of leave them out there as remnants, if there aren't any current plans? And then, you know, should plans come forward, obviously, we can go through this amendment process all over again, but it would give people at least the opportunity to speak to it. And if there is a tower, and it isn't more than 140 feet, I guess my recommendation, and that's just mine, not necessarily the board's, but at least consider, you know, changing the 180 feet in this recommendation, in this, in the ordinance to 140 feet. And again, we can always change, if, if down the road, we need to increase that, I'm not sure if we can waive it, but we can obviously amend the ordinance anyway, because we're doing it now. Or we can recommend a change to the ordinance.
Okay. Chapter 315-72 gives us, gives you, as a planning board, the right to go up to 250 feet?
Okay.
So, 180 with the public safety overlay is less than the 250 that the planning board has the right to go to.
Right, I'm just saying, if we don't need it to be 180, and it only needs to be 140, then maybe we just handle this on a case-by-case basis, and limit it, and then waive it if somebody needs a bigger one.
Got it.
And we think that's a good idea.
And I'm going to correct myself. I don't think, unless anyone in the room knows otherwise, I don't think that any of the existing public safety telecommunications overlay parcels have towers on them yet.
You're going to be at the council meeting, I'm assuming?
Sure.
Okay.
I haven't gotten that far.
I can, I can volunteer you for that, right? I, I don't want to, you know, I don't think we need to make that decision right now. I mean, I, the council's going to be the one, throw it out there as a, you know, hey, maybe we should clean this up.
I think it depends on the location, completely. So, having the latitude, yeah, is necessary.
Well, and I can work with the team of folks to figure out if those existing three parcels are in fact needed, and then move forward with some sort of recommendation for town council.
Right, and I don't think it even has to be. Just perhaps, it doesn't have to be part of the, our recommendation. It can just be additional information for them to consider at their meeting.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the council? I think echoing what Bob said, I think it was good that everybody came tonight, because as following what Bob said, now, town and Verizon, you've got a little bit better idea of the thoughts of the public, and questions that are going to come up before the council, and you probably need to be a little bit more succinct on those. But I think it was worth everybody coming, because as Bob said, I think there's some work to be done, but I have zero problem in recommending that it go to the council with some of the notations that, that Bob, that Josh has talked about. So, I'm ready for a motion, if somebody's ready to give it.
I will make a motion that we recommend a town council to amend the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, Chapter 315-28.6, Public Safety Telecommunications Overlay District, to include the parcel at 14 Tuttle Road, Tax Assessor Map, R-01, Lot 03, as written.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Six one. Okay, moving on to item four. A public hearing for a recommendation to the town council, an amendment to the official zoning overlay map of the town of Cumberland, to add a new public safety telecommunications overlay district, to include the parcel at 14 Tuttle Road, Tax Assessor Map, R-01, Lot 3. Bridget?
Well, so now that you added, or are making the recommendation to add it to the text, we also need to do a separate approval or recommendation for the map, for the, for the map amendment.
Okay.
It is a public hearing, though, too.
Well, I know that. But first of all, any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody wishes to comment on this? Hearing none, all, yes, sir?
Just a quick question. We're talking about one lot or three lots? Because what I heard discussion today, that it is going to be, there's three lots. There was one that was going to be houses, there was one that's going to be the church, and there's one that's going to be the town, the location for the tower.
So, right now, that parcel is one lot?
Was I, did I not hear three lots earlier?
No, you did. I think that the church has plans to sell off a portion of their land, but right now, for our consideration, those are just plans and are not reality. So, it's one, we're considering, the planning board should be considering one lot, a one-lot change.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to comment? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and go to the board.
I will make a recommendation to town council. I will make a motion to recommend to town council, an amendment to the official zoning overlay map of the town of Cumberland, to add a new public safety telecommunications overlay district, to include the parcel at 14 Tuttle Road, Tax Assessor Map, R-01, Lot 03.
Okay, do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Six one, again. Moving on to administrative matters, Lorraine is our official representative to the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Could you kind of give a brief update of where we are?
Sure. So, the survey for the comprehensive plan update has gone live. You can access it through the town website. It also is regularly published within the Cumberland Crier. It comes out as an email, and all residents should have gotten a postcard in their mailbox that invites them to participate in the survey. So far, we've had 550 responses. It's going to stay live until July 3. So, if you haven't had a chance to let your voice be heard in the comprehensive plan survey, please take advantage of the next two, two and a half weeks, about two and a half weeks, I think. And as far as where the Comprehensive Plan Committee is, we have been meeting regularly twice a month. Most recently, we divided ourselves into subcommittees, and those subcommittees are each tackling various chapters that will be included in the comprehensive plan. And within those subcommittees, they're talking about specific topics that are not only covered in the survey, but will be covered in the comprehensive plan. And the big question is, where are we today? Where do we see ourselves in 10 years, and how are we going to get there? What does the in-between look like? And the comprehensive plan does include a goal statement in the various topic areas like housing, transportation, growth, growth within the town, land use, you know, various topics that are of importance to everybody that lives in the town. So, not only do we include a goal statement in those sections, but we have action steps of how we're going to get there. And that, those are all informed by the responses that we get to the survey. And in addition, once the survey closes and that data is being calculated and tallied and whatnot, we will start engaging in public outreach. So, we'll have opportunities where you can come here, to this room, and talk about housing all night, you know, or talk about, you know, taxes all night. I mean, I don't think taxes is in the comprehensive plan, but it's a big, big area that people are concerned about. So, look for those opportunities that if you are really passionate about something that's going on in the town, and something that you feel needs to be addressed more specifically within the comprehensive plan, please come to those events. You'll also see Bridget and other members of the Comprehensive Plan Committee. We will be at local community events, at the farmer's market. We'll post things at the library. If there's an event at the library, we may show up and be available to chat with you. And we're really looking for people to tell us, number one, where do you live in Cumberland? What do you like about where you live in Cumberland? But where also do you see the town going as a whole? Not just your neighborhood, but as a whole, as a whole community coming together and planning for the next 10 years. So, look forward to hearing from more people on the survey and seeing you out in public. Thank you.
Thank you. Just an administrative note, today was the cutoff as far as any communication on items to come before us, so there will be no planning board meeting in, in July. So, if there isn't anything else, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Don't everybody speak up at the same time?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? And thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.